All right, welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We're going to have our invocation from Minister Trent Davis of First Baptist Church of Jonesboro that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our Veteran of the Month, retired Air Force Sergeant Terranian F. Moore. Terrion, thank you. Thank you. I was close, though. I was close, all right. Semi-close. All right. Please stand with me, everyone.
All right, let's pray together. Father, we come before you this evening. I want to thank you for the opportunity we have to come together like this, talk about our community. Lord, I pray that you be with the leaders that are represented in this room for our community. Lord, I pray that you would give grace and wisdom as decisions are made, and, Lord, as they lead. And, Lord, we thank you for your love and your grace that you have for each and every one of us. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Sarge, please. You can do it from right there, please.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our June 4th, 2024 regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments during this time?
Yes, Madam Clerk, I am going to ask for a motion to pull item number 24, ordinance 2024-153, to amend the Code of Clayton County, Clayton County, Georgia's amendment specifically, Code of Clayton County, Georgia, Part II, related laws pertaining to Clayton County, administrative purchases. This is a request by Ms. Carroll of Central Services, and it needs to come back on, in our July meeting. That's my motion to pull it until July. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hambrick. Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Are there any others?
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to pull number 13, 2024-142 to the regular agenda.
Are you clear on that, Madam Clerk?
I didn't hear the last part, sir.
Resolution 2024-142 authorizing Clayton County to enter to an agreement with the Georgia Department of Corrections. That is to be placed on the regular agenda. We also have, correct me, Madam CFO, an emergency item to be added. Ms. Merritt.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Board of Commissioners. I have an emergency item request for a budget amendment for the Sheriff's Department.
And that is in the amount of what?
It's in the amount of 1,628,979 dollars, and this is to cover salaries and transport fees.
All right, is there a motion to add as emergency item?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second, the motion, are there any questions? Those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. And that's the regular agenda.
Is that to the consent or to the regular? That's my question.
Excuse me?
Is that to the consent or to the regular?
To the regular.
Great, okay. I just wanted to make sure it's to the regular.
Commissioner Hambrick, you're the one with the motion.
What now?
Regular agenda.
Stacy. I thought consent.
Well, I thought so, too.
I thought it was to the consent.
Were you asking for the consent?
Yeah.
Well, can I make a motion to move it to the regular agenda?
Well, after it's been added, we're about to, that's already been approved, so now if there's another amendment to the agenda, yes, you can.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move the emergency item from the sheriff to the regular agenda.
Madam Clerk, you clear on that?
I'm clear.
Okay. Are there any others? All right, here and none. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I have a few corrections.
Okay, some corrections.
Our first correction would be item number 13. That item, that resolution number reads 2024-142. It will actually be 2024-153. And again, that's item 13. Our next corrections are the board appointments, items 26 through 29. This is for our new county board, our Public Facilities Authority. It reads Resolution 2024-21. That should actually read 2024-19.
Mr. Reed, there's no action we need to take other than that correction, correct? Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, was that it?
Yes, sir, that's all.
All right. I will now ask for a motion to adopt the agenda. Did we already do that? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second, Commissioner Hambrick, second the motion. Any questions on any of those? Here and none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Our next item on the agenda is our presentation for our Veteran of the Month.
Veteran of the Month is retired Air Force Sergeant, Staff Sergeant, Terrion F. Moore. Ms. Terrion Moore was born in Germany to retired Air Force Master Sergeant Freddie Florence and his wife Jean Florence. The military lifestyle of travel caused Terrion to seek a career with the same benefit. Terrion became a Delta Airlines Flight Attendant, where she has been working for the last 28 years. Ms. Terrion Moore is also the owner and founder of Studio One More, Studio One More Look, a healthy look at hair, where she has specialized in sister locks for 12 years. Terrion started her military career later in life as Airman First Class in the U.S. Air Force Reserves. She was in the reserves at Davin's Air Force Base from 2002 to 2012. Terrion deployed as a staff sergeant to Ballarat, Iraq, in support of Operation Iraqi Freedom in 2009. She spent 10 years of honorable service in the United States Air Force Reserves. Terrion has also earned a Bachelor of Arts degree from the University of New Mexico and a Master Cosmetology License from Ritz Beauty Academy. Terrion has earned numerous awards and decorations, two of which she would like to note are the Joint Meritorious Unit Award Global War on Terrorism Service Medal and the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Inc. Silver Star 25 Years of Service and Life Member Award. Ms. Moore is a member of the Women of Clayton County, the Clayton County Veterans Advisory Board, the National Association of Black Military Women, and Veterans Helping Veterans Incorporated. These are just a few of the affiliations that keep her quite busy. Terrion has been married to her fabulous husband, James Moore, for 19 years. James is also a veteran who retired from the United States Navy. The Moores reside in Clayton County and have for over 19 years helped me recognize and honor our Veteran of the Month, retired Air Force Sergeant Terrion F. Moore.
Want to go ahead?
Yes.
Our next presentation will be our proclamation to recognize Women Veterans Appreciation Day in Clayton County. This is presented by Commissioner Gail Hambrick.
Clayton County recognizes Women Veterans Appreciation Day. Whereas throughout every period of the history of the United States, women have proudly contributed to the military readiness and well-being of our country. And whereas women informally served in battles since the early Republic, providing support to the Continental Army and taking their place on the artillery gun lines as soldiers fell. In 1901, with the formal establishment of the Army Nurse Corps, women formally became a part of the United States Armed Forces. And whereas over 3 million women have served honorably and with valor on land, sea, air, and in space, women were critical to COVID-19 relief efforts when the National Guard and Reserves activated. Their great skill, sacrifice, and commitment protected the principles upon which our country was founded and continues to uphold. And whereas women veterans have unique stories and should be encouraged to document their recollections through the Veterans History Project, a part of the American Folklife Center at the Library of Congress, which has worked since 2000 to collect and share the personal accounts of wartime veterans in the United States. And whereas Clayton County is proud of the active duty of women veterans and recognize their contributions with the Veteran of the Month program. Since the program's inception in 2019, 66 veterans have been honored, 24 women. Honorries are awarded with a plaque, free breakfast and lunch, and a webpage with their photo recognizing their military achievements. Now therefore, I, Gail B. Hambrick, Commissioner, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby declare June 12, 2024, as Women's Veterans Appreciation Day. We encourage all citizens to join in celebrating a woman veteran and thanking them for their service. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this fourth day of June in the year 2024.
Our last presentation on the agenda would be for the Department of Georgia Purple Heart Foundation designation. This is presented by Chairman Jeffrey E. Turner.
Yeah, so let me say this. We already did proclamation to recognize Clayton County as a Purple Heart County. Last part of what needs to be done is to formally be presented by the council, who is here today to recognize us. So please, gentlemen, and everybody you've got, please come forward and see who's going to be speaking. Speaking or there's no presentation, maybe the presentation, I'll give a little speech next.
Okay, okay. All right. So you, yeah, yeah. All right. Please, y'all come up, Phil, on here.
All right, I'm going to let Assistant Deputy Commander Lou Zayas recognize the people we asked with him today.
Good evening, everybody. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for having us, first of all. But more importantly, thank you for recognizing the Purple Heart recipients that live in the great community of Clayton County. I'm privileged today to have with me our junior state senior. Boy, you got junior on your hat. Military Order of the Purple Heart out of Atlanta, Georgia, Chapter 465. I have my state representative, Rhonda Burnall, who pushed this initiative to get all the municipalities in the great county of Clayton designated as Purple Heart, as well as the county. And I have the great members of VFW Post 5080 out of Morro, Georgia, the best post in the state of Georgia. We've been, we've been recognized as the number nine, ranked number nine in the world for our recruiting and our community service. So we're doing great service for the veterans of Clayton. So without further ado, Chairman Turner, if you would, present the proclamation to the Purple Heart Foundation, and he will in turn present a designation and certificate to you.
Okay, as I said, we presented this proclamation, I think it was last month, and I'm not going to read the proclamation, but basically it says Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognizes Clayton County as a Purple Heart County. And at this time, I would like to present you with this proclamation, sir, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners.
The Military Order of the Purple Heart Special Recognition Award is bestowed with pride on this day, June 4th, 2024, to Clayton County, for your dedication and support honoring America's combat wounded veterans by becoming a Purple Heart County, it should be. I'll get that changed. On behalf of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, Chapter 465, Atlanta, and the Department of Georgia, I wish to thank you all for your support of the military and Purple Hearters, and welcome to the family.
All right. [applause]
And I definitely would be remiss if I did not give Representative Burnall a kudos, well done, because she pushed hard for that. And she, along with Representative Sandra Scott, was able to make it, make it, get it done, rather. And you are a military veteran, and we thank you for your service as well. But thank you all for what you do, especially in our communities, every day, every day.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Adopt, not adopt, approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of those? Those in favor, aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
Our next item is item number 13, Resolution 2024-153.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, Madam Commissioner. I have Resolution 2024-153, it says, "Resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into agreement with the Georgia Department of Corrections, providing for the terms and conditions under which inmate care and custody service will be rendered. To authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution. To authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense. All is may be required under the terms of the agreement to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes." And just for sake of explanation, while it may appear that this is a duplicate from what's on item 14, item 13 is a agreement that is for care and custody going forward from July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025. Resolution 2024-143 is actually an agreement that covers an amendment to the existing agreement from April 2024 through June 30th, 2024.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hambrick. Any questions?
I think you just answered my questions, because they looked like they were duplicates. So one of them is amended from April until, and the other one is for the, what is it? You said the care?
Both, both are for care. One is an amendment to the existing agreement, which is item 14. Item 13 is going forward from, picking up from July through June of 2025.
Thank you. Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, who made the motion, second?
Commissioner Davis.
Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Hambrick? Yes, sir. Okay, yes, ma'am, thank you. Our next item is going to be our add-on budget amendment 2-3332. This is President Fire Chief Financial Officer Stacy Merritt.
Ms. Merritt?
Good evening again. I have an emergency budget amendment 2-32. This is to appropriate funds to cover salaries and medical fees and prison transport expenses for the remaining of the fiscal year 2024 in the amount of 1,628,979.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second, the motion, are there any questions? Is the sheriff here or any of his staff that can, sheriff? How you doing?
Chairman, Vice Chair, Board Commissioners.
Yeah, my question is, with us just having moved 14 million, how do we get back to another spot where we're 1.6 million down?
Yes, so we've had two civil service, two civil service payments that we had to make from the previous administration where that was close to about, close to a million, I believe it added us up to about $700,000, about $600,000 from two civil service agreements. And also, Ms. Merritt can speak to you about the full-time salaries and how that equates to an overage.
So when you say civil service, a lot of citizens may not know what you are speaking on. So it's an appeal.
Correct. So the employees at the Clayton County Sheriff's Office, after they have went over either 12 months, or if they're a correctional officer, or 15 months if they're a deputy sheriff, are civil service protected. They were terminated under their previous administration and have won their jobs back with their civil service hearings. And some, one sum was upwards of $400,000 that we had to back pay unemployed, and another one was upwards of $300,000 that we had to back pay unemployed. And those came out of my current year's budget. So that is in reference to that part of it.
Any other questions?
Yes. So if that's the case, you're asking for 1.6. If you're short, if you're short 700, that would only be 900,000.
Correct. So that's, that was just speaking on the civil service part of it. $440,000 of it is reference to prisoner transport. We've transported almost 800 inmates this year to various locations in the state of Georgia and picked up inmates that were wanted to various locations, and that $440,000 will be to that.
That wouldn't have been picked up with 14 million we moved?
No.
Or this has been since we have picked?
Yes, it would have been since, it would have been since then, yes.
And that's how much? I'm sorry, Commissioner. And that's, what amount?
That was $440,908.
And a month's time?
No, it's not over a month's time, that's over six months' time.
Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Yeah. For me, I'm having a major issue considering you just came to us in, or was it April? To ask for the 14.8 for salaries. It appears to me that these funds are being utilized for more than just salaries.
It's not true. So I'm glad you brought that up. So the, when the, when the Finance Department gave you the numbers that they gave, that was an estimate from the Finance Department, from the numbers that they ran and the recommendation from them. So it is what it is, it's an estimate. So with that, there has been no change in salaries, there have been no changes in anything that was provided to the Finance Department prior, when we're talking about full-time salaries.
So all the transportation that you just mentioned took place within that last two months?
No, again, you just asked me that question, it's ask and answer. I said it's over a course of six months.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Ms. Merritt, so to the sheriff's point, then the rest of it is overtime and part-time?
Yes, well, we've got two different sections that are part-time salaries, and then the transportation cost. We received an invoice in this, this week, I think it was either Friday or this week. That was for the majority of the one he's talking about, for six months.
Now, the money that, if it gets approved, that we allocate today, and it has to get approved, because we're talking about paying employees, so they have to get paid, you know, statutorily if no other reason, is this going to be enough? I mean, is this what is going to make it to July 1? And I know you might not be able to answer that, so I'm asking.
The sheriff.
Well, that wouldn't be, so.
I mean, that would, what we've done is we've brought the major items here. I mean, that would, what we've done is we've brought the major items here. There are other smaller items that we're doing, light item transfers to correct the ones that are a little bit over to the ones that are under. So we're resolving that. That's going to be a question for the Sheriff, if this is enough for him to manage off of for the next couple of weeks.
Well, you can't foresee certain circumstances and situations that arise. So again, that probably wouldn't be a fair question. But that will make, get us through the end of the year as proposed, to make sure our employees get paid and contract services get paid.
Correct.
Okay.
How much overage in salaries for this year are we looking at as of today? And I know you can't answer that off the top of your head. Were we looking at, as opposed to what was budgeted for that fiscal?
So are you talking full-time, part-time, overtime?
Full-time, overtime.
I don't have those in front of me, but I can get that for you.
I'd like to see those numbers, because it, just the financial operating standpoint, from an operations standpoint, financially, I'm having a very rough time grasping this, considering we went fourteen point eight, we're now asking for one point six, and we have, what, three weeks left in this fiscal year? How much our general fund has been, has gone down how much from the beginning of last fiscal year? I think these are things that we all have to begin to think about, because if not, our taxpayers and our homeowners are going to take a big hit when it comes to the next tax year, and this military rate has to be increased to begin to handle this.
So to answer your question, the first time in March, it was one point six eight three was what the overage was in full-time salaries. One million six hundred eighty-three thousand one hundred and forty-one.
That's an over?
That was an overage for full-time salaries from last time. This request is for one point six two eight nine seven nine. Those numbers together will give you the total amount of overage of full-time salaries.
So roughly three point two.
But that one point six that we're moving today is not just for overtime?
No, 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 no. We're, I'm answering the question on full-time salary overages.
Not sure I follow you.
Your question?
Because you made a comparison last month.
No, no, no. Correct. Vice Chair's question was, how much have we spent in a twelve-month period of time on full-time salaries overages? Correct? And the numbers I just gave him was the previous request in March, plus this request, add those together, that gives you the full-time salary overage. And if you're ready for the part-time, I'll give you that.
I'll take it.
All right. Part-time salaries, this request is eighty-four thousand two eight four.
Eighty-four thousand?
Yes.
Any other questions?
No, I got to give them the.
Go ahead, sir. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The prior request in March was one million three hundred forty-one thousand three eight five.
Commissioner Hamburg?
Well, I'm just saying, it has to be done. So what are we doing? We're doing finance stuff here. So why can't we just move on?
Well, I think the Commissioners have a right to know.
Oh, I mean, yeah, and that's true too.
I agree with Commissioner Hamburg about moving on. But my thing is, we've gone through this twice in basically the last sixty days. I think we deserve an answer to some of this, so that we do not begin to go further in this quicksand, which I feel we're moving into financially. And that's my major issue with it. It's how these funds are being controlled and spent.
Got it. So the full-time salaries are, there's no money being transferred or pooled from the full-time salaries. And Ms. Merritt can explain to you about how the full-time salaries got to this point. But for full-time salaries, if I'm allotted an X amount, if I'm allotted a hundred positions, I didn't hire over the hundred positions for the full-time salaries. There are reasonings into why that took place, but only finance or HR could answer those questions. But it's nothing that the Sheriff's Office is overspending in a full-time salary capability.
But in your part-time salaries, that's where?
Correct.
Some of the shortcomings come from there?
Correct. Some of what I just gave you, the numbers, did come from part-time salaries. And remember, I explained to you in March that I had, because I am not properly staffed, I had to hire two part-time people to equal the salary of one full-time person. So on an eight-hour day, I would have to hire one part-time person that can do four hours, and another part-time person that can do four hours, to equal up to the eight hours that a full person, that a full-time person would give. So to prevent that, what would need to happen is, when we have the budget hearings for the, for the next year's budget, we would need to add the full-time salary, so that we're not spending in part-time. But because the recommendation is to add no positions, we will be in the same position next year, if we do not properly staff the Sheriff's Office.
Any other questions?
Not a question, but a comment, and I think the Sheriff just hit on it. Are we being properly staffed, or not so much staffed, but budgeted for the next fiscal year?
No.
Fiscal year coming up. Not you. This is, I'm sorry, but this is finance. I'm sorry.
So I guess, answer, ask me the question again?
Okay, the things we are going through now, and the questions that the Commissioner has, are we covering that in this budget that we have coming up?
So the way that it's budgeted, it goes off of historic, historical data. Angela, I don't know the exact numbers for the overtime and part-time.
That was put in the proposed budget.
Right. Are we covering these things? That's my question.
Is that completely covered? Is it?
To answer? No.
He requested amount for part-time. He requested four hundred and twenty-four thousand in part-time. He was awarded the four hundred and twenty-four thousand in the proposed budget. Now, of course, once the proposed budget is presented to you guys, you may do amendments to make changes to any of the requests, or any of the proposed items that are currently in that budget.
Okay. So how much was budgeted or used this fiscal year that we're in now? How much was, I mean, what was the amount?
Well, once again, he was budgeted four hundred and twenty-four thousand.
I thought that was for the new?
And like he just, for the part-time.
Oh, right.
But he has spent around, I think, maybe one point six in part-time, maybe one point four. I'd have to look to be exact, but it's about one point four million that he's spent currently. The original budget was four hundred and twenty-four thousand.
See, I'm just thinking that, if we don't get these numbers together, then we're going to come to the same point, right, next time.
But to your, to the Sheriff's point, he's a little out of whack, so he's not properly staffed in certain areas. If he rearranges and gets properly staffed, then hopefully that overtime should go down.
Are those part-times, part-time, are they being paid benefits? So I'm just trying to get a feel for how it's to part-times and equal a full-time. Because on a full-time, we pay benefits, correct?
Yes. It depends on the position and the salary.
Vice Chair, want to make a correction. When I say that, I mean in terms of work hours, not in terms of salaries, just in terms of an eight-hour day, I would need to pay two part-timers, four and four.
Any other questions? All right, those who favor I? Aye. Oppose. It's unanimous. Thank you, Sheriff.
Chairman, Vice Chair, Board, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chair, our next items are board appointments, beginning with item number twenty-five.
All right, first board appointment is to the Clayton Center Community Service Board. Victoria Williams term. The Clayton Center Community Service Board will expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. New term is for three years, and expires on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. It's a full board appointment, and I would like to reappoint Ms. Victoria Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those who favor I? All right. Oppose. It's unanimous. Next board appointment is to Public Facilities Authority. Pursuant to the Board's request adopted through Resolution 2024-19, the General Assembly passed House Bill 1242, creating the Clayton County Public Facilities Authority. This authority may issue bonds for public projects such as improvements. The bill went into effect on May first. For the initial appointments, two members shall be appointed for a term of three years. Two members shall be appointed for a term of two years, and one member shall be appointed for a term of one year. This first one is for the Chair's recommendation, and I am not ready, so we will use that on the next one. Next board appointment is, under the same language, is also for the Public Facilities Authority. This is District Two. Madam Hamburg?
I am not ready, and I did discuss this with the attorney, and I'm hoping that our next work session, that we can put this on the session and go over that bill, and, you know, what's required of the appointees that we get. So we can have a better understanding, and whoever we appoint will have a better understanding, and will fit in this segment.
All right, board appointment, next appointment is the same Public Facilities Authority as District Three, and I agree with Ms. Hamburg. So if Commissioner, the last one is also Public Facilities Authority, if Commissioner Davis agrees, then we'll hold all four. Hold all four until next, to next meeting. Madam Clerk?
I'm clear, Mr. Chair. The Board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given two minutes, maximum time limit, to speak before the Board, with a total time of twenty minutes for comments. Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting, and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the Board.
Arnold Ruffin. Mr. Arnold Ruffin.
To the Chairman and to the Board, my name is Arnold Ruffin. I am Clayton County resident. I rose, I have a question, but before I go into the question, we also, I'm having a project at Solid Rock Sanctuary Church Garden Christ. We are endeavoring, a group of us, we have developed a veteran haven house, and we would like to build a twenty-two unit housing development for veterans. But under some of our research, we found out that Clayton County does not accept HUD vouchers. And although the other counties do receive the HUD vouchers, that would be help for the rental for the, for the veterans to subsidize the rent, and that is my question. And I understand someone else is coming after to address this also to the Board. But the question is, all the other counties do receive the federal funds from HUD vouchers, HUD VAS, that subsidize the rental for the veterans. And so we just like the Board to consider this question.
And I don't think that we don't, I mean, that we don't disallow it or allow it. Are you familiar with anything, Mr. Reed, that would keep us from, I guess, the Housing Authority of Clayton County?
From accepting vouchers? We might have to talk off, because I'm not sure what he is saying, that we don't allow.
Well, let's research, let's research that and see exactly where it's coming from. Thank you, sir. Because I've heard that some people have presented some. Okay, Teresa Jones?
I'm actually with Mr. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jones. And sir, if you would just get one of my cards, we'll get back to you. Mia Ballinger.
Good evening, everyone. Mia Ballinger, Clayton County. Good evening. Okay, on May twenty-first, I came before this Board, asking for approval for new homes on Turner Road. After speaking with some of the residents on Turner Road and viewing this area for myself, I'm asking the Board to please vote no for the approval of this project on Tuesday, June eighteen, twenty twenty-four. There is a huge flooding problem. This also will cause chaos with the traffic and many more issues. Two, yesterday, Samia Nali and the EPA, Environmental Protection Agency, and I, held a conference call regarding the property located on seven nine three zero Terra Boulevard, Jonesboro, the abandoned Quick Mart. A representative from the EPA recommends the city and the county annex the property. We are also holding a prayer vigil Saturday, June eighth, from three PM to three thirty PM at this property for Clayton County residents. All are welcome. Three, the residents of Clayton County are excited about the eyeglass company that moved to Clayton County. There are a few questions from residents. Will there be a hiring event and how to, they apply? My fellow Clayton County, and this is for, my fellow Clayton County, as we must vote again, early voting begins June tenth, let's change the game, let's get out and vote. I am so excited about what God is doing in Clayton County. Thank you for your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you, and yes, they do plan on having a hiring event. So we'll put that information out as it comes to us.
And also with my time with the annex, the property seven nine three zero, the gas station. So I did find out that the gas and everything has been removed, the tanks have been removed, which is good, but residents still want something done from that. And as I stated, the EPA stated that that is a county and a city job to do. So if they can annex that property, I think that's it. Oh, and the pictures I sent you about Turner Road, that was not the creek, that was actually the flooding issue. So, yeah, but thank you all for your time.
Pictures were helpful, thank you.
Okay, have a great evening.
Miki Garber.
Madam Clerk, Miki Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioner Hamburg, and Sheriff Levon Allen. I would like to make a recommendation to both of you, both the Sheriff's Department and the Board of Commissioners. What you need here is a study, and y'all spend a lot of money studying this, that, and the other. We need a forensic audit and study of the Sheriff's Department, both in protecting the present sheriff and possibly a new sheriff coming in. They both need protection, and both need to understand that we're what and what for the money is and where it's going. I've been sitting in here, watching money go to the Sheriff's Department for a year in big numbers. And what you need is a study, an outside study, not an inside study, but an outside study of, and an audit of the Sheriff's Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Alexis Alexander. Alexis Alexander. Why can't you say that?
Good evening. I am a current Clayton County resident.
State your name, please.
Alexis Alexander. I was coming because I actually have an initiative that I would like to try and get funded in relation to the tax liens that are, that have monies allocated for the homestead exemptions. And I want to talk with one of the Commissioners about that, in terms of trying to see if I can get that initiative approved. I do have some paperwork I can share with you all momentarily about it. Also, as I was looking at the agenda for today, I noticed that there were some questions about the fire department and some of the liaison that's getting ready to take place between you all and the city of Riverdale. And I had some concerns about the funding as it relates to the fire trucks, instead of the salaries and the number of firefighters that are actually employed with Clayton County. I'm not certain when you all are going to talk about. I'm not certain when you all are gonna talk about that, but I didn't see you all make mention of it tonight.
Yes, ma'am, well, we had a whole work, work session, uh, discussion about that merger and some of the benefits of, to the city of Riverdale as to bringing on the county to fire services. Chief is over here, Chief Tim Sweat. Uh, you can get with him and ask him all the questions in reference to the fire department, the merger, and the fire trucks and so forth.
I, I happened to look on that too, um, he's, he's an interim, right?
Yes.
Okay, um, and like, there was like a $1 million allocated amount that was being requested for the trucks, but then, um, I think that there's like 15 or 16 Clayton County, um, fire stations, and there's only 22 full-time employees that are housed for doing that. I mean, fire trucks are like primary service response, um, they get called for everything, not just fires.
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand what your question is there.
I mean, in, in regard to the spending and the allocations and what's actually being asked in regard to that, in, in regard to that amount of funding being moved over.
Chief Sweat would have that very specific information.
I think it was already listed, I wanna say that it was listed in number... It was already listed in number seven. I, you know, I don't know who's going to be over approving that amount, or, you know, seeing to it that that is actually something that takes place, but that was kind of like the question or concern that I had.
That we're talking about purchasing the city of Riverdale trucks?
Yeah, because basically, I mean, the number of firefighters and the amount of, uh, and the salaries of the firefighters are very important also.
Which they got increases.
Okay.
Like I said, please, ma'am, get with Chief Sweat, he'll explain to you further detail. If you're not satisfied with what he shares with you, feel free to give me a call.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm Chair- Chairman Turner.
Okay, fantastic. And I'll share.
Give it to the officer over here, please. Judith Cotton.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioner. I am Judith Cotton, a proud citizen of Clayton County for the past two and a half decades, District 4.
And wearing that hat.
And wear my National Association of Black Military Women hat, thank you, sir. I am here this evening, and somebody did speak about it earlier, about the Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing Program. I'm a real estate broker, and I've been doing this for over 20 years, and I have used the Veterans, um, VAS program for decades in, um, other counties. Never had it in Clayton County until about two months ago, and I had two veterans and I had two units that were available, ready for the VAS program. I called over to Fort McPherson, and I was told by the person in charge there that Clayton County does not honor the VAS program to include going to the housing.
What kind of, uh, program is that?
It's a federally HUD program. And it's called the VAS, Veterans Assist, um, um, Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing, and it's a federal program, federally funded, and the veterans in Clayton County that are homeless are unable to get this voucher.
We'll definitely check into it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment. Is there a need for executive session? Mr. Reed?
Uh, yes, on litigation and personnel.
All right, is that motion going to executive session for rela- you said real estate? No, personnel and litigation. I'll make the motions, there's a second. So move, second, I'm sorry. Any questions? Those in favor of I? Aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. Everyone have a great evening. Madam Clerk, you ready?
I'm ready.
Motion to reconvene. So move, second. Those in favor of I? Motion's made by Commissioner Hamburg, second by Commissioner Davis. It's unanimous vote, Mr. Reed, take them together.
All right, the first is, uh, a settlement agreement made between Agiana Turner and Alexis Moore County Police Department, and this is relating to an auto accident that occurred at the intersection of Hilltop Drive and Old Dixie Road in Clayton County, Georgia, on June 7th, 2022, in the amount of $55,000. And the second is, um, Resolution 2024154, which is a resolution terminating the increase in supplemental compensation of the Chief Judge of Magistrate Court to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense to provide an effective date to repeal, repeal conflicting laws and for other purposes. And the, uh, purpose of this resolution is to, um, terminate the supplement that the board provided under Resolution 2023258, uh, because the, um, legislative delegation approved or was instrumental in getting House Bill 1091 approved, which elevated her base salary, uh, to, uh, 90%, which was what the board had anticipated or was trying to accomplish with Resolution 2023258. And so that supplemental compensation in the amount of $52,545.43 will end at the end of this calendar year, uh, as she goes into her new term.
Is there a motion? So move. Is there a second? I'll second the motion, are there any questions on either item? Hearing none, those in favor of I? Aye. Opposed, it's unanimous. Is there a motion to adjourn? So move. You ain't ready to go, are you? Is there a second? I'll suck it, I'll suck it, those in favor of I? Opposed, it's unanimous, good night.